What's up, everybody?
Anything next, sir?
All good.
I talked to Paul.
I heard.
I think we're fine, but just.
They just sent me.
They're dreaming if they make it system. And then they want you to set a public, a special meeting early in August.
Yeah, I heard. I, we're only going to.
It's summertime.
It's tough to even get anybody to come to a regular meeting.
It's summertime.
It's tough to get anybody to take the right day. And that's what I would say.
Thirty-eight meetings, Joe, in seven and a half years. Two meetings a month, that's, that's, do the math, nineteen months. Meetings he's missed. Come board meetings. That's twenty percent.
Your guys need to know that, or not your guys, but the other side wants to know that.
They're gonna light them up. Twenty percent of the meetings. They didn't get a reduction in the $1,000 a year.
So he believes working half time for a value of our values, okay. That's what they need to say. You're worried about money, yes.
He manages.
Good, that's what they need to do. I mean, that's all I have to look at. I don't think I've missed. Yeah, it's pretty interesting.
Nothing else? I heard one, one.
And under new business, maybe we should do our little safety thing too, like we did. We got, don't have entrance and exit out the front door. We can only use the back if there's an issue. So please, everybody remember that. Dave, if anything happens, close with George real quick so nobody runs out.
The first thing I think about.
Thank you. And we'll try not to have someone's phone this week, because I know we had a lot of fun last week. So the first thing on the agenda is new business. We have Capino's food. Lot line revisions. Lot line revision at three oh four Station Road, second block, lot number eight six point four dash one, there's point two point one, and eighty six point four dash two, there's thirty five. Review status of the application. And plan with circulated to the board. Patty, if you don't mind.
Good afternoon. So when we made the application for the site coming approval, it was discovered that the area was over the density and we were going to be expanding it even more by putting additional parking area in. So the zoning board and the planning board both recommended that we do a lot line revision instead. So we are adding a one point five nine acre parcel. These will be four point six two acres. So we'll have a total of six point two one acres for the overall site. The zoning board last week determined that we no longer needed to apply to them. So we're withdrawing that application. And this will take care of that non-essential.
Great. And the government staff. We had no comments regarding a lot line revision, so transfer of property.
Scott, Scott?
I'm hearing Paul, but very faintly.
Tell me about that. I'll speak louder. So I'll confirm what Patty said.
This is the ball. You're trying to get me on the.
Okay.
Do we think, do we think it'll work?
You with me?
Yeah.
Lou?
Okay, try, try now.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, I just want to confirm what Patty just said about the ZBA's review. Basically, it's not the ZBA, but it would be Anthony. And his determination is that if the planning board accepts the lot line adjustment, increasing the size of the lot, then a variance would no longer be needed from the ZBA.
And so we can go to a public hearing on this?
Yes, that would be my recommendation that you schedule a public hearing. This would be a seeker type two action. So no seeker review would be required, but you still would need to do the public hearing. And we can, because it's a lot line adjustment, our practice has been to only require one public hearing. And so potentially at the next board meeting, you could do the public hearing and approve the lot line adjustment at the same time.
It's on our calendar in the public hearing. That is the site plan review I believe.
Right, the site, the site plan review of a hearing will need to remain open until we've resolved the lot line revision issue. And there's a couple of items that once we get done with the lot line, I'd like to review on my head some questions on that. Or there were some comments that I would love to discuss.
Okay, and so at this point, we can, because you said we can do one public hearing for both, right? Yes?
You, I mean, you can run them concurrently. We've already opened the hearing for the site plan review. So you would, you know, just need to continue that. And then open the other, other hearing in August. But yes, I mean, you could, you could basically conduct, conduct them concurrently.
So I'm gonna ask a motion for a motion to move this public hearing for next month. I can do that, I'd say. I can do it now, too, John. Paul?
It's already open, so.
For this one here, for Penang's lot line?
No.
No, 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 no. You want, you want to open it for the lot line adjustment.
That's what I want to do. I want to open one of them. We can do that, though, right?
You can do it now.
All right, so let's, Franco's made the motion. Who has a second? All in favor?
I'm sorry. You're opening a public hearing now?
No.
No, 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 no.
Okay.
We're making a motion to open it next night. I apologize.
Love you. Thank you.
So this was.
Why not?
This is a public hearing for the regular August, August meeting.
Yes.
For the lot.
Yes. I apologize. I said open, I meant set. So we can have, if we provide him to one hearing? Yes, we could do that. Yeah.
There'll be two separate hearings held on the same day.
On the same day, yes.
Right.
We are probably at the same time. What else can you say? But it will be two separate hearings, yes. Black and confusing now, huh? Oh, good Moses. But okay, if it's all favor, any opposed to making the motion? None? Thank you very much. So next month.
Next month for that. So with regard to the site plan, at the BDA meeting last month, even though we didn't hold the public hearing, there were some public there that were interested. So we heard comments generally to be able to get out on the table what concerns were. And so one of the things that I would like to try to discuss with the boards this evening, I had no questions with any of the comments that we had received from PPL, but one of them is with regard to providing the buffer for the adjacent actively farmed lands. So what I would like to try to distinguish from the board is what you consider to be an adequate buffer within that area. I mean, obviously, that entire fifty foot strip was the old railroad bed. So the ability to plant anything in there is somewhat limited due to what's been dumped on there for a hundred years, the oils, the back of the gravel. And so it seems more appropriate that a fence be placed there. And then the question is, where?
Okay, now I'm gonna go refer back to Dave, because the law was redone, if I'm not mistaken, on agricultural buffers.
Yeah, you all have a copy of that.
Right.
So if the one that is on the website is not the most current?
Is that true?
This one is.
Different name?
Is this one on the website?
Wait, so that, because I got, I have the one downloaded from the website. Is this different?
Three, two, twenty twenty-two. We did it last year.
Dave, I have a question for you.
Me?
Because it's the old railroad bed, is there ever a chance that they're gonna turn this into a walking trap in the future?
No, it's a private property now. Yeah, for some reason, they ended at the Central Hudson site. You know, they basically gave us all that other stuff where I trail it now. And then the rest of it, they actually go off or abandon.
So what's your specific position on that law that we've written?
Fifteen. Uh, no, that'll be in a section on agricultural buffers in one of this fifteen, I wanna say.
Fifteen eleven, yeah. On A, so that says buffers adjacent to actively farmed lands within a New York City certified agricultural district shall be established in a new residential subdivision or other non-farm uses. The buffer area as part of the new residential or other non-farm use shall consist of an enhanced setback of at least fifty feet. And as the discretion on the planning board, up to a hundred feet, depending on the type of agricultural or farm use, the topography and the proposed design of such buffer. Appropriate landscaping and or vegetative screening shall be established and maintained on such buffers. Such buffer and its standard shall be noted on any of the subdivision flat or site plan. And then the new definition I see of agricultural buffer calls for, shall include natural or planted vegetation or fencing or boat sufficient to provide a visual and noise buffer as required by this chapter, shall not be paved nor used for building, etcetera, buildings, parking or storage.
Side of footage on that. So Paul, do I have time to give one second?
Oh, no, I was just reflecting. It, it seems like, so do we have a proposal from you at this point, Patty? Regarding how you would, how you would approach that buffer?
Yeah, basically what the applicant is proposing to do is to put a fence thirty feet westerly of the boundary line, which will then be twenty-five feet between the building and the fence line, so that there's adequate circulation around the building for emergency service vehicles or.
For all the reasons we specified.
For all the reasons we specified at the last meeting.
Go ahead.
Yeah, and, and I guess then, do we have a sense what level of buffering that would provide for the adjoining property owner?
I guess it depends on the height of the fence. You know, as, as we discussed, one of the difficulties with providing buffering on this site is the fact that the railroad bed was, of course, cut in because railroads need to be level. So that is an extremely steep slope on the, along the easterly boundary line of this property, or actually on the westerly boundary line of the neighboring property. So the elevation of the neighboring property is approximately eight to ten feet higher than what this property is. So even if you plant an eight foot tree, which won't, because there's no soil, or put up this eight foot fence, it still is creating a situation where there is, well, to buy that buffer.
It was thirty-five, right? And then we put fifty feet back there, so then extend it to a hundred feet, is that?
Well, the, the code has not changed in that regard. It's always been an enhanced setback. So the zoning setback for our side yard is thirty-five feet. So it's been expanded from thirty-five to fifteen at a minimum.
All right, so. Fifty, it's not, it's not a residential house there. It's a commercial building. And fifty feet is more of that, pretty much spray mature or anything. It's only, it's only in use for emergency access to lower in the building, right?
Right, well, we're proposing to put the fence at the thirty-five feet within. So again, the buffer itself, the definition of the buffer is that it shall for buildings, etcetera, buildings, parking or storage. So basically, just as you have a building setback in any zone, instead of being thirty-five feet to the building, and now in the agricultural buffer, it's spread not only to the building, but also to etcetera, infrastructure and parking. So we're just putting the fence.
But you're gonna have to buffer fifty feet.
We will have to buffer fifty feet in accordance with the definition of this buffer. But within that buffer, we have to put some kind of screening. And what we're proposing is that fence at that something.
And what type of fencing?
It'll have to be a solid board fence. So we have not discussed with the client yet exactly what, because we'd like to hear from this board, how high would you like it to be? And a solid fence, but, you know, we have not fixed the design yet.
Yeah, you, you stated before, the elevation on the other property is a bit higher than that property. So I don't know what the distance is. Because I could look down, come here and see what the footage is, but. Do they know that? The height of the, the property connects the fifteen.
Yes, well, the contours show that it ranges at the northern end. It is as low as a three ninety-four. Goes up to a three ninety-six, three ninety-eight, four hundred, four oh two, four oh four. So the four oh four is in line with the proposed new building and in line with the existing building, the area in question. The elevation is running about a three ninety-six to a three ninety-eight with the contour at the building being a three ninety-two.
Just as a, a question, Patty, if you guys talked at all with the neighboring property owner, would there be any opportunity for planting and or fencing on their property that might better provide for screening of your client's building?
Yes, I, I did discuss it with them. And basically, they want it, because one of the points is that there already is a tree line berm at the on the neighboring property at the top of the hill. And you can go back to the, the Oracle maps that they show on the ultimate county website as far back as I think two thousand and one. That buffer has always been there when it was planted with trees. But the applicant wants the ability to be able to clear cut their entire property, because they don't feel that they should be burdened with not being able to use every foot of their property. So they're not, not interested in leaving that berm or leaving the trees on the berm as a guaranteed buffer.
Those are about eight from the, what?
Yes.
When that, that gravel driveway, I mean, is that still gonna be gravel? Or are you just gonna, gonna go over grass now? Because, you know, what is it saying?
Well, all the blacktop, right, all the blacktop has been pulled up. We are, again, you know, it's supposed to be a fifty foot buffer, but for safety and emergency service vehicles, we had requested the board to consider allowing us to have a gate at either end, so that it restricts. Because again, right now, as you can see on the map, there's an overhead door at the southeast corner of the building. So there are vehicles that use it right now, because that's where they load and unload. The applicant has agreed that that will be closed after construction of the new building, but again, it's been used in that nature for ever. Since the railroad was there, because these buildings were there as a siding for the railroad. Since the railroad was there, because these buildings were there as a siding for the railroad.
Anyone else from staff? Can I ask if someone, anyone from the public wants to speak on this right now? Cause it's open, the public hearing is open, and we've already talked about it, so. Might give her a chance to answer some questions that they may have. Yes, now maybe so. Paul?
Yes.
Would it be appropriate to ask the public to talk, speak on behalf of this now?
Um, yeah, I I think, you know, the public hearing was continued to August twenty seventh. But if there is someone from the public who wants to speak and the. Planning board would like to hear from them, I think the applicant has been. Amenable to hearing from the public, so I don't, I don't see any problem with that.
So is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on or have come on?
Scotty, I'm one, I'm the neighboring property owner, um. We've spoke with Patty at length, um Patty has, again, done work for us for well, Patty knows our stance. Um unfortunately, being a big bad farmer as we always are, it has to be. Um our position has not changed, our position was the same um when TJ Roddy came to the planning board last year. Uh for his residential uh provision on the side, um we now, uh these properties around us are being um. Redeveloped, uh subdivided, new site plans, um we're trying to use the law as much as we can to protect us as the last green park. So as TJ Slade reminds me, I sought for the hundred foot buffer to remain on the residential side. Now, the difference with the residential side, even though it is a hundred feet at night, when we spray at night. It's a residence, they have their windows closed, they go inside, it's a hundred feet. The difference on this side is the building is within fifty. The minimum is fifty, the board has the ability up to one hundred. We can't change the building, but we can change what's there, so the problem that we have is, and unfortunately for the applicant, as his attorney. Told this board, and his only board, last year. I didn't create the berm on my side, they created the berm when they built the parking lot. That was in, it was enhanced on our side, the berm was not completed there, Patty, they they, the attorney said that, your map showed it last, and we had this discussion. So the berm is on my side, so is the swell, unfortunately, it is much higher, so. Spray travels and it drifts down, so our unfortunate position is that we are at a higher elevation, they do sell food. So the risk for us is higher on this side than it would be for the residential side. Where people can restrict their activity, for our concern is that this is a food distributor. So that's why our position has been so strong on this side, is to preserve that buffer as much as we can to restrict that traffic. Now, if it is gonna be for emergency vehicle, we understand, we come from emergency service family, we understand that, we had a fire at our farm, we know what that's like, we understand that. We're not looking to restrict them from building to building, but again, we wanna make sure that that buffer on our side is as strong as possible. Because under New York State right to farm law, we have the ability of using every square inch of our property. We, as a farm, cannot be restricted by the town. Or the right that we have in the agricultural district sent forth by New York City, so. The reason why we're not amicable about wanting to kinda create a buffer on our side is number one, I can't factor. And I need to be able to use every square inch if that opportunity arises. Now, the other issue that we have also is, we also wrap around them to the south. So as we are now expanding, my brothers and I are planting more trees, we're getting animals, we have other things that we're doing with our farm in order to diversify and in order to. And allow this to continue. If enough is the buffer on the eastern side, the buffer also needs to be extended to the applicant's southern border as well. So there are other things that we we looked at, and I think. We've discussed some of those things with Patty, what our concerns are, and that's why our concerns are that strong, and we have to protect ourselves as much as we can. This border on this property line is a little bit more mesh than it has been with other uh neighbors, and that's why our concerns with. So as we do. Wants to try to keep as much of the buffer as possible to restrict those things, um again, it only helps us, it also helps the applicant. For any of those other things that we can't control, that's why there are, um you know. Farm nuisance laws, especially not in the city, as one where it allows our everything to be liable for certain things of. Or I thought that was made for um a a normal farm accident, you know, and and that that's the reason why we're we're concerned with those issues there. Uh again, but our concern is, even though there is. The agricultural buffer, even though going through the zoning board, they were not supposed to use it, parking lot was supposed to come out, the driveway was supposed to come out. They're still using it to the overhead door, I understand that that is their access right now until they amend the site plan. But that's not my problem. Their problem arose from that, going to the zoning board, the zoning board denied it. They're continuing to still use it even though they were denied that variance, they're using the driveway, they're using the overhead door, still in that aspect. So my concern remains the same, if they give an emergency access, are they going to continue to use the driveway or the access for. Uses they're not what they're allowed for. You and I had this conversation the other day, I mean, they had the zoning board last week. They were mulling the buffer. They were mulling my side of the buffer. They were throwing debris on my side of the property. They cut trees on my side of the buffer, I mean. Our family is Central Hudson on North County Lake Road in the eighties, Central Hudson cut, I think, like ten branches. They did heavily for every single branch that they cut because they didn't own them. You know, you can't just go on someone else's property and do these things, and that's what's happening in the buffer, we're trying so hard to protect the buffer. And it's not being protected every single day, I mean, there's vehicles constantly parked there, not just the service vehicles, I mean. Telling you and longing that they're not gonna use it for that, but yet they're still every day parking there. He's parking his own vehicle in that buffer, I mean, unfortunately, we're not getting away from the issue of it not being used, it is being used every single day. So we just, our our position has not changed, we want to keep the buffer as strong as possible to protect ourselves. Thank you.
So I don't think, wait, don't, don't put that down yet. So, at discussion here is what type of a buffer, right, so you. Can you give us a little bit of a hint on what you think is appropriate?
Uh appropriate would be returning it to the natural vegetation with as much vegetation as possible. In order to keep that border as strong as it can on that side. I mean, they came to the zoning board meeting the last time about wanting to plant uh numerous pine trees and things like that, that were, you know, zigzag pattern. They were staggered, try to keep as much of a buffer, creating a natural buffer to start on their side as possible, I I mean, that's a start, but. You know, something needs to be done other than just mowing grass or not maintaining the buffer that's supposed to be left to natural vegetation.
So I I got a question, so right now from the building, you got fifty five point two feet, right, fifty five, two inches over to the property. Is is that? Able to be mowed, is that the flat area, and then after that property line, it could see be green, and then starts coming up? Is it, is that the stuff that you're talking about, that they're still clearing and moving?
Yes, exactly.
Are you gonna put the zigzag trees back, are you gonna put trees on there, are you gonna stop touching that area or?
That's why we had the idea maybe with my fence.
Where are you putting that now? Cause we can't see where you're gonna put it. So, hold on one second, hold on one second. So, you're able to talk, you're gonna have to come up and say who you are since it's a public hearing, and we don't want to turn into a debate, you can ask questions, that's right. Let's get into the order.
Yeah, my name is. Which, we own the property next to the bush or the park. So the idea is like, you know, for me, the last thing that I know, when last year we were working about, you know. We were trying, like you say, putting bushes, putting green, we we were trying to kinda. Count one accommodation or keep a hut. Or whatever we had, and we had built the other head with the trees and where. After did not, and the only, the last thing that I know was I wasn't done with, the lawyer was done, he told me this. We need to do the the parking lot on there. Was you, the original site plan, they say put a deer, and just keep it playing, you're not feeling nothing anymore, we gotta run the tree that had been out. So when we keep replaying, we're gonna get, the grass is being unlocked and we clean it, we. We just got the grass, there are no problems yet, no trees, no mud. The way that they say we park, we haven't parked there, you're running here, we haven't parked, I'm on car, there's a couple cars when they come to, and I. They're gonna have to stop, and the only thing we use is that big door. Is loaded and unloaded, and the only good cars, they get parked over there, it's my car and my son's car, it was the electric, and we have the. Big old nature over there, made a big tour, that's where we set it up last time, so. In the future, then, we'll be changing or cancelling, but we promise to. Once we do the building, that that door is gonna be at the end of the building, we're gonna have a private door, actually, we wanna go even inside the building.
And then you're gonna have the two, the two fences up or the gates for the fire access?
The idea probably, like I said, to split, maybe if we just split in the middle, you put the fence, if you, actually, we got the problem is that, we go fifty feet. Above, we will, the fence is gonna, it's gonna be like, I I can't even open the door from my office, but you only got five feet. The only thing is fifty five feet, so. And put the fence a bit to the way, I don't know, no time to bring it out. Like either in a way that we can maybe just, we got in the middle, we put a fence, or. If you got to plant trees, or it's empty.
And then?
But I said, the problem of, well, we're putting trees in there, we were talking about, it's a rebel bed, I don't want it to be the deal going there, whether you put it there, I don't want it to be.
Like Patterson, with the catapults and stuff. Free soul from the guys.
Unless we can buy some other facial paint, and then we put them in there, maybe she can body goes over the, the car halfway. Boundary.
And then, and then with the lot line to be removed in the back, so. Now that that's gonna be part of that parcel. You know, in the in the future, if they're gonna be clearing, I mean.
No, he's planning on leaving that as wooded, right, you know, there's one thing.
We could put something on on the map, right, or something put, that that's gonna say, cause I'd like to see that area go back to the.
Undisturbed.
Undisturbed, back to whatever the maximum is gonna be for a a buffer for agricultural. And as we spoke at the last meeting, we were gonna have that same definition on the map, not to be using that property on that side yard. Where the buffer is, so. If you can install something on the map saying it's not to be used or anything other than, I, we talked about.
Nice.
Right, so you're saying, and you were saying you couldn't put a fence up or a gate, we had the corner of that building over to. The buffer line, something about, why is he saying that if we kept, if we kept a. Fifty foot buffer, he wouldn't be able to have, if you put a fence and then he had a gate, you know, he wouldn't have any.
That, that's why he's asking that we put it at the thirty five feet.
And then from maybe that end of that fence, and. I mean, if the grid goes up, then you put, you put an eighty feet or fence there, then he doesn't.
That's not, not.
Yeah, you're really looking right over the top, but it. You know, I would, I'd rather see go back to the plants. Put trees, put things zigzag after the thirty five feet.
Right, if it stays, they're gonna grow up.
And yeah. But I I understand, I understand that. Maybe put, can you put a berm, build a berm on top of that? Build, build one to the side of the hill, come out, and then plant it with that.
Again, it won't be up to us to decide how you guys, you guys.
Yeah, we're asking you to accommodate what the. We're not an enforcement agency, we can't enforce you to do it unless it's on this map, then we will.
We, we are trying to, you know, figure out what's the best way to do it. And we would find a solution, everybody, you know. Try to get the same thing.
We're gonna have to talk to the consultants and come up with a good solution, I think, and then, and then, that's right. So, so definitely help out, Dave.
Sorry, um I'm not happy. That's not here or there, uh I, I'm gonna ask Paul a question, Patty pointed out eleven uh one fifteen, uh one hundred dash fifteen, eleven A. Um and the language says enhanced setback of at least fifty feet.
At least.
That sounds like a number, and if we're going less than that, that sounds like an area variance.
Well, I guess what it says is enhanced setback, and the definition of the setback is to a structure. Except that they changed the definition of a buffer when it comes to an agricultural buffer. Um saying that within that area, it shall not be paved nor used for buildings, accessory buildings, parking or storage. But it doesn't say that the entire buffer has to be covered with natural or planted vegetation. It says that it shall include. Natural or planted vegetation.
I agree with Patty on that, it's just the distance to property line is the issue. Right, uh eleven A says um set, enhance that back of at least fifty feet.
Also, you're saying that even the emergency services vehicle, even though it was pre-existing?
Nope, what I'm, what I'm saying is the buffer now, as part of this new site plan, says at least fifty feet. I don't know how to get around it.
Where are you at, Dave? I'm sorry.
One hundred dash fifteen, eleven A.
I think that the buffer says that it. The buffer area as part of the new residential or non-form use shall consist of an enhanced setback. Of at least fifty feet, so we are meeting the setback requirement. With the exception of the emergency services driveway, which was pre-existing. There's two separate things here.
Can I go back over? First, I don't ever believe it was defined as an emergency access, it was parking, clearly it was parking. When it came.
No, I mean, before, I mean, before he even put the party in, there was always access around that building that succeeded in putting that over there.
But I'm not going to define it as emergency access, is what I'm getting.
Oh, no, no, I'm proposing as emergency access now.
That's right. But at that time, we weren't in question of the buffer, even now, we're having a problem with the buffer. So my thought is, I'm just throwing this out there, so now that the buffer becomes the main interest of what we're talking about. We still have a law, it's like Dave is saying, it's a minimum of fifty feet. How are you gonna maintain a minimum of fifty feet, or we can go up to a hundred?
Well, I think what Patty's point is, is that the fifty feet, um and Patty, just, I know you will, you'll correct me if I'm, if I'm speaking out of school. Um at the fifty feet becomes a new bulk table, side yard setback. For, cause that's what, that's what creates the enhanced setback, it's an enhanced setback.
Right.
Um and and again, if we went to court, the court would probably defer to Patty uh and her client. Because in that instance, the language is iffy, because in the same paragraph, there's two, two, two words. Buffer and setback, so I would. Having heard that argument, can they agree that they are making the fifty foot setback? And now the board needs to decide what goes in the buffer and how big that buffer is.
It, yeah, I think, I mean, the way I read it, the buffer's gotta be fifty feet minimum. And. What the board wants in any portion of that buffer, I mean, so basically. You know, between the property line and the building. There's no opportunity for any kind of a structure. Or or anything like that, whatever kind of buffer you want in terms of landscaping or fencing. You know, even if it is, even if you allow an an emergency drive around the building. I would still say, you know, it's kinda up to the planning board on whether. What is done between the emergency access drive and the property line is sufficient. You know, and that could be a combination of fencing and or landscaping, is that kinda how you're thinking, Dave?
That's exactly right, Paul.
Yeah, okay. So, so it's really up to you all, you know, on whether. You know, Patty's suggestion that they do fencing, and I'm not sure if any other landscaping is proposed. Uh within that fifty foot area. Um, you know, uh, you know, or or whether you want, um, you know, trees and plantings to basically. Cover every part of it that's not covered by the fence, you know, that's up to you guys.
And as a reminder to the board, in this instance, uh the board can go up, can allow an eight foot fence, which is two foot higher than we would allow in any other place. Um because this is a separation between the business and any other use, the board can go up to eight feet.
We're thinking that eight feet's not gonna be high enough due to the elevation changes between pin rockers, can get a variance for higher fence.
Well, and over time, you know, depending on what kind of plantings you do, it could. Provide some value from the adjoining property, you know, if you plant like six, eight foot trees. Then, and and allow them to grow. Um, you know, over time, that that'll be good, right? But I I think, I do think that at the end of the day, if this were ever pushed. You know, the idea of allowing an emergency access road, which is required by the building code, around a pre-existing building. You know, would be allowed by, you know, anybody who's looking at this, including a court. You know, would be allowed by, you know, anybody who's looking at this, including a court. Um. So it's just a matter of what you do with the remainder of the, you know, buffer area. Um, to satisfy which what you all think is appropriate.
Okay, I, you know, I think that, um, Joe's willing to talk to his landscaper, we've heard from the board, we've heard from the neighbors, and well. I I just wanted to raise the issue and discuss it a little bit tonight, and that when we came back, we were better prepared.
I just have one comment to make, uh, you know, before someone did mention, yeah, possibly installing a burn and putting landscaping on that. Uh, along. Usually line, uh, there is a swell, raised swell, that appears to be under the barn property. It's not possible that, uh, looking to put in a burn of any length, you wanna make sure that you're not adversity impacting grain patterns. You know.
Anyone else in the board? Any questions, results, like, are you planning on your boys there? Yeah. That is right.
I haven't seen anything from the other twenty three boys.
No, thanks for lighting. But Patty, can I just? The one I have right here. So I have.
She would have gotten it from us.
Sorry, don't mind me.
Yeah, we're we're, um, continuing this public hearing for August.
Yeah.
So, you know, we have some time and you got plenty of time to review and address that.
Can I just, one more, one more thing, like, where you were thinking. You would say thirty five feet, so that, right, so that would be thirty five feet off the building.
Right.
And then you're talking about. Between that thirty five feet in the building, in that area, you'd be putting in a fire access gate that. On both ends would have keys that are just going by the fire department, correct? Or.
Correct.
And then from the thirty five feet over to the property line. That's what we're talking about, possibly building a burn, or trees that can grow on the ground from the, it don't work, but. Um. From there, you're talking about doing a burn, but I see this, what you were talking about, that swell, but that seems to be up higher in the hill, right? I think.
What what does?
The swell.
Uh, no, it's actually right at the bottom.
Yes, that might be tough to.
Well, he also has to have an engineer review some of the other, um, comments that were made by C P L, so we can have. That's outside my purview, we'll have the engineer review that.
Well, that's I can say it's come up with a good plan, let us know what's coming up, because. Yeah, I think the fence, he's definitely, uh. Just worry about that eight feet.
Okay, but yeah, I I appreciate giving it the time to talk about it tonight, thank her.
Is there anyone else, because it is public hearings, is there anyone else in the public who might speak on behalf or against the project?
Let's say one more thing.
Sure.
As Scott says, we got, you know, they say what it wants, but, uh, it is worried about spraying, we do food. We actually, we don't have any growth food, we don't do any, anything, you know, we don't have any food, we read the heavy use packaging. We sell tomato cans, we sell bacon flour. And, uh, everything, you don't want to watch it, you only buy and sell everything that is packed, we can't sell them. The land really don't get in spend, they're very, very.
I'm sure he's talking about the cans and whatnot, getting it on that.
I think what I'm saying, I think what he's talking about is when your trucks get unloaded, they need to stop in the parking lot, and if they're spraying. Over spraying, getting on. Well, hopefully with this building, there will be no outside store, it goes out of the truck, it's a building.
Right, there's, there's no, uh, produce or anything on this side of property anywhere.
There's no produce that he sells at all, that's the point.
I guess the only question I would add, then you might make a parachute to the line outside of the home, you know. Where is the, uh?
The fresh air.
Good fresh air.
Thank you. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay. Sorry to jump around a little bit on schedule, we want to keep Patty in hot seat.
That's it.
Thank you, Patty.
Thank you.
She wants to go home and have dinner. Get a piece of that, anyway, right?
Like to, yeah.
Next on the agenda is surprise photography, special use permit at one fifty max seven. Section block and lot number ninety six point nine dash one dash fourteen. Reduced status, the application survey and plans have been circulated to the board. And here you are, how are you?
How are you?
Say your name and just. What's your application go about?
Um, my name is Martha Surprise, I am daughter of owner of photography. I am a fine art portrait photographer, um, who. It's already newborn, senior, etc., um. I have been renting across the river for about fifteen years. But the pandemic made my desire to work from home and. Well, I have. Second home in the picture, I am an actuary, uh, second, two thousand nineteen. Yeah, property for it is something that's becoming a good person I met for several years now. Now, here we are coming for you to take the final step.
Anybody can say, have anything on this? You're up, Chris. I'll just.
Are you gonna have a bathroom or any facilities inside the sewage duct?
Yes, we will have a bathroom, a lot of my clients are pregnant, pregnant, you know, a lot. But it would be a bathroom with a small tub that or bucket house that I often use as a prop. I do use the tub for.
Okay, the only concern I have is you might need to go to health department to make sure that your subject system is large enough to handle. We got that, yeah, you have it existing well, um, assuming that you have any requests, yes. You have to know where the sewage facility is, that may affect the placement of the the building.
Yes. You want to come up to Sarah, if you don't mind?
Wells in front, subjects in the back, rear ass.
Okay.
Hopefully the pool is all receptive.
We saw the accepting, um, after we came out, accepted. You know, it's in our setback lines, our lines, you know, as I feel like, oh, and they, uh.
Four bedroom.
Where the children will be.
Four bedroom house?
Yeah.
Twelve hundred. Okay.
Whatever's, that's sure, yeah.
And it doesn't show on the map, it would probably be a good thing to show on the map, so you know where in relation to the building. That you're putting in it. Where is the dude, the back, the color, wherever grass grows, that's. Sorry, that's not gonna work, I mean. You'll have to show me on that. He can still fertilize it, other fertilizer.
Works.
Yeah. So you've got a full, a full size bathroom, so it's gonna be tub, shower, a bathroom, alright, so tub, safe toilet.
And Dave, on the surprise, uh, surprise photographer, I just wanted to know, you know, if their subject system is sized to handle the new bedroom.
No.
Well, this is, it's a, it's bathroom, maybe the bathroom might be, you know, a small point, it's like, is the bed might need help, apartment place, yeah.
If it's where you had moved, it's not even, you know, like.
I'd have, I'd have to check.
Not being used.
I'd have to check this.
I I'm a, I'm a high-end low-volume photographer, I mostly shoot. I I probably might shoot one or two clients every, but it's new word by art. When I photograph seniors and families, it's always on location.
Yeah, with one perspective, if you ever want to retire, you want to do this as accessory apartment.
Yeah, it could be changed to something that will every time, go ahead. Do we, uh, do we have any elevation showing of structure or what, like, or?
It's Indian, I mean, the application, there are actually pre-gated, um. Picture of the building. Yeah.
Okay.
So just as clarification, this is not underwater photography, correct? On site, or is that also an on-location thing?
That would be done privately within the studio.
Okay, lovely.
I don't.
Yeah, we don't.
Very often shoot to work, but a lot of my maternity is a lot of.
No, it's all good, I just, so one of the things that I'm doing, uh, in my mind constantly is heading off future arguments. Uh, or or complaints people might have.
Yep.
Um, and I'm sure you're aware.
Oh, I'm very clear.
So, uh, you you know, that that's one of the things that has been floated, which is.
I I've heard many, many rumors of, you know, supposedly doing, um, you know, I am not a film photographer, so it'll be, you know, have a whole, small digital. I put furniture very low. Um, same thing, that tub might be used. All annual time of year, I used it in my previous studio, I took it with me because it's something I bought and invested in, refurbished, and I would like to. Continue moving it moving forward, I'm subletting right now, so I can't, um, but I am not moving my in-hands in, I heard that rumor, um. I put. Being a happily living in porch.
Yeah, let's go, let's go outside photography, everything will be contained inside the studio, correct?
Not necessarily, I have a need to, that I would like to do something like a headshot, and then option, opportunities, it's gonna be a beautiful building.
Shed.
No, the shed actually, we did move, maybe we got to move to the back of the property.
But again, I'm sorry, uh, to clarify for Franco. Uh, when you're doing a headshot, it's how many people on set, so to speak?
Myself and the.
Two people. So it's like a residential.
Okay.
I mean, one of the reasons why photography lends itself so easily, uh, to home occupation, especially with type two. Uh, the only reason it's type two is with the size of the building, uh, not because she has extra employees, but because this is something that. You know, my family does every Thanksgiving, we all go outside and we take a photo.
Right.
So that's the same level of impact.
Yeah, I mean, large families, stuff like that, no.
Uh, are you currently using the main house that you're studying?
No, I sublet, um.
Did I need a dislocation?
No, I don't.
There's no complaints.
No.
And is there any signage you can put up?
I don't plan on it right now, because I am a destination photographer, my clients pick me out, and it would be more about just giving them my. Just like when I was in, getting my location, my building was not on a, the public's, created, back to the back of a building. Cause my clients are coming to me by appointment, there's no place, I don't rely on street traffic, but traffic for my. Like a retail.
Is that some date that that falls in the parameters where? Uh, if that was a home occupation, are they allowed to have signage?
They are, I'm looking it up now, it's not a very big sign, um, you know, it's like, uh, like when I had bought a construction, it was one by one sign up by my mailbox, that's all it was. Uh, but I I will confirm a hundred percent before we let her go.
Okay, so you said that the shed did get moved, so this is incorrect, right?
This I did get moved.
Alright, so is that the other location of the shed or the existing? Alright, so can you get us? Alright, so can you get us another map, you can show us where everything's gonna move to? Where it got moved to, is this map incorrect?
Yeah, it's what we need to have, what's gonna be on the file. Right now, it's not correct, which comes.
Charlie. Uh, for a class two home occupations. One non-illuminated sign with an area of not more than four square feet per face. So two by two.
Two by two? Anyone else?
Yeah, do you, um, would you wanna schedule a public hearing for August on this?
I was gonna ask, someone to make a motion if we have no other question.
Can I get all that information before the public hearing, like by the next workshop?
Yeah, and I'll do the, I'll do the subject call from the permit, so we'll know that.
Yeah, and and you could always continue it, Franco, if if you didn't have the information, everything that you needed.
You can have a motion to move this. Motion, second, thank you. Wrong favor. Getting opposed. Can I just say, have you heard many neighbors?
Oh, yeah. I have one, he constantly is watching, he's watching from the backyard, taking pictures. Actually, that's the thing to the point of. From it, I suppose, if you're aware, I actually have a reason to just make that profit if I need it, grabbing that over there, because I try to be friendly, but I have one.
You just need to have a chair.
Such a. Swear to God. Oh, my God.
So regardless of that, we keep the facts as they are, and, um, now we know we probably have a lot of chairs, maybe. But, um.
More for the support than.
Well, hopefully, so. Um, so any opposed? Now, motion carried for a public hearing next month, to get that information that we need, so we have that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Next is Robert. Sabuda, no, sorry. Special use permit. Sixty seven Black Creek Road, section block and lot number seventy nine point two, dash one, dash twenty four point two. What I'm doing?
Yes, uh, I'm here. And as you said, I'm seeking a special use permit to legalize two accessory apartments that were converted from art studios. Uh, I was at a meeting prior and all documentation was provided to you.
Okay. So this is the, uh, the horse.
Yes, ten horse art center.
Okay, yeah, how long has it been an illegal place?
Uh, we converted during COVID.
So a couple of years.
When the pandemic started, yes.
Yeah. Give me a second. Anyone from staff, can I do on this project?
Oh, I so do.
I know. I could let you set up and ask the board members.
That'd be perfect.
Let's do that, anybody in the board have any questions on this property?
Yeah, um.
Say who you are, Franco, Christina, and who we are.
Hi, Mr. Segura, this is Frank Vani. Um, your subject system, you have a design on that, you submit a design for a subject for that?
I submitted the size for it. Twelve fifty. It's a twelve fifty tank.
You have a frame on this, Tim, Sam?
A while ago.
Well, I'm sorry, don't mind me, it's. We did a lot of these. Is that obtained by an architect?
No.
Or an engineer, they probably should need something of that nature too, right? So, um, sorry, this is, uh. Yeah, so that 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 half that you see on the screen, and, uh, Robert, sorry, you can't see it, but it's the, um, floor plan. What you submitted, uh, is, um. Somewhat confusing, I I think, um, I don't know. What is where in this plan, um, so, so the board knows, uh, th- these are. Um, he can, of course, at some point, I think, possibly, um, although we have to do some digging on this, he can apply for a short-term rental. The hiccup is right now, he has to apply for the two families. Because those are two independent apartments, that. So, um, the plan that we had originally when we did the C O for the building. Um, uh, was it was different, um, it was studio, of course, as Robert, uh, put out. Uh, the building was an art sort of studio, up to downstairs, really, um, those are truly a labor love. Uh, but it took a long time to get us, you know, towards the end, uh, as Robert can attest. But I don't understand in the new set, um, is what room A being C, uh, D, E, and F are, I'm assuming B, um. C are bedrooms as our, uh, A and F and the.
Yes. That's what they would be.
Yeah, and the room B are kitchens in them?
Yes, the building inspector has been there.
Yeah, um, yeah, so, uh. What do you guys want? So so it has to be, the the application has to be amended, it's a, yes, oh. It's a, he has to apply for a two family. Which is allowed use here. By, it'll have to be under new construction, as if he hadn't already done this piece. And. Because it can't be by conversion from a single family to, you know, two family. That's what we would consider converting. In fact, our code is specific on that, that the conversion is from one single family to two family. So two family has to be done first. And then we have to figure out how the short term rental works. It was gonna have a short term rental. But there's only more, he said there was only one possible. One rental possible per person. Which means he could rent both units, but it could only be the one party. Couldn't have two independent units. You'd have to have a full time rental and a short term rental.
Currently, Mr. Sbuda, you are bringing this out as Airbnb, right?
Yes. Sometimes we have visiting artists there as well. We don't rent it out full time.
Yeah, whatever their, whatever their occupation is. No different. You're renting it out. It's important, clear, it has to, you have to decide that it is sufficient for a two family. It is a beautiful building from the outside. I have, I can show you in a few minutes. The outside, you know, elevation of Google, a street view. It's very nice. These units are relatively. Smallish, I guess, although perfectly sufficient for what the use could be. The other end of this is that the downstairs would continue to be art studio. So that's something to.
So you're a residential owner.
Yeah, he's got plenty of party. And what size is the septic tank for the property? That's something, so it was oversized, I think originally, for what the use was gonna be. I don't know. I can show it with on a map, so we know what we're getting here, because right now we're looking at nothing more than a couple of lines. And, and maybe some more clarity what I'm looking at on this, so we know where. Attention would be and what rooms are identified.
For a septic construction, we must square foot into each apartment. Right?
Yeah.
Are you okay with that, Mr. Sbuda?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's almost, he has to be okay with it, or you may need some clarification on this. Just another sequence, we're amazed at how long the apartments go illegal. And now they come to us asking these questions, whether or not we can help them make them legal now, so. Wow. Yeah, so anybody else on board, any questions? Concerns?
And just to be clear again, again, Dave Barton speaking. The, we'll have to go through a building permit to convert them to apartments because there'll be different standards for what was there before to what's there now. Including the possibility of piped lines for propane. Stoves or electric stoves or whatever. So we'll do that once you guys. And if you guys say good to go on the two family, then we can continue with the short term rental piece.
Wow. So when you originally started doing this, making it from a worse barn to this, I mean, there was inspections and stuff?
Many inspections, again, based on. For the, for the artist studio use, that's right. Yeah, that's all, that was awesome. We were, we were, I don't know if you all remember this barn, frankly, it's up towards you. It was terrible. I mean, I was there when they first started taking it apart. Yeah, it's beautiful. It just, you know, now we need to step through the other pieces. That sort of satisfied the conversion piece, which happened during COVID. So I get that piece, but now we just need to make sure it's safe. Legal. And then you guys can do the short term rental.
So I'm clearing this, the downstairs was applied for as an art studio?
Down, the downstairs was applied for art studio, so let me go through the whole thing. Downstairs was applied for an art studio, the upstairs was unfinished. We then had a separate permit to convert the upstairs to artist studios as well. And they had, they had, you know, like a duty sync on both sides, one in the middle. That was all copsetic and to do a bit of occupancy issue.
That's what we just saw.
That, that's.
You can see it.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah.
Basically, the way it was set up. My understanding, way back in the day, is that you could go in and you would rent, like say downstairs, depending on how much space you want.
Yeah.
And then Charlie can go in and rent part upstairs or. I'll go in and rent part upstairs. So it was all kind of like broken up.
But it was never really an art studio upstairs?
It was, yeah, yeah, sorry. Yes, it was. Yeah, we actually had a building permit that converted the unfinished space into studio space. And then without a permit, unfortunately, during COVID, it was converted to living space. There was always the possibility in Mr. Segura's mind and in our understanding, as the building department. That there would be, you know, people might stay there over time. Therefore, we made sure there were smoke detectors, emergency escape and rescue and open ecosystem, things like that. But now it's sort of more of a solidified thing. Now there are three units in the second floor.
So. Mr. Sabuda, if you can get us the information that we are requesting as far as plans. Showing us where everything is, the design of the upstairs for layout, more identified rooms, right? And what else?
We want stand signs, engineered plans.
I think we say that all the time, but then. But definitely please have that.
I didn't hear what that was.
That was, we want stand sign engineered plans.
For the second level?
In the second.
Yes.
We probably have the second.
Probably have to get a separate.
It was, it was oversized, because I think they were thinking.
You have the buildings. The building department has the septic.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm more worried, he might enlarge the tank. I'm more worried about this.
I'll pull it on. Yeah.
Building department will help out with getting us that information we need. The rest is up to you, sir.
Okay.
Good. Okay.
Thank you so close to that creed there.
Oh, yeah. Oh, I want, it was a long time ago, but I want to say we jumped through hoops and. I think also County came down, did their stuff and they did the sign off on. All good.
Okay. Well, next on our agenda is. Public hearings that are open still, and we have the villagers who is not here yet at this time. Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of them, just to make sure?
I'm here if you want to, unless you want to wait for Kelly. My name is Brittany Shailey with LRC.
We'll wait.
We'll wait.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah, it's fine.
All right, next would be. Continued public hearings on one eighty South Street LLC Commercial Flight Lane. One eighty South Street, section block and lot number eighty seven point three, dash five, dash one, four. And the public hearing was opened in April twenty seven. Anyone from staff?
So they did, they did, the owner and the architect did consignee last week. They said there was some still concern from this board about the drainage line that runs under the parking lot and the elevations of the building. I. Yeah, don't, I can't recall if they sent you the amended. So when they showed you the elevations, there were the big cards, we have them upstairs, they actually brought them, gave them to us. The, it's sort of very plain, the big long facade in the front. It's actually a poor illustration of what it'll be. If I did not send it to you, I apologize. I will send you. What it looks like on a different building, does not look as plain Jane as what they showed. So that's part A. Part B, the drainage pipe. I know there was, there was concern about where the pipe went by, by a neighbor. And this board understands that that could be a problem. Just so this board knows, as they do construction on site, we will be out there all the time. If they find the pipe and it has to be moved. That's something that we can do in the field, you know, off CPL come out. Christian, Andy, or whoever on their team. And confirm that, you know, this is what they need to do, this is where it needs to go. Whatever has to happen has to happen, so.
I believe we were more concerned about not having that easement that needed and make, make sure that the maintenance of that drainage was always maintained.
Yeah, and my understanding is the, the owner or the face of the company. Happy to give us whatever we need for easements for, for access. The hiccup is, and actually it'd be better if they moved the pipe. So that it doesn't, as Mr. Andola suggests, go under where they're gonna put the loading base.
But the question is, Dave. It might be a legal question. Because it drains property from Mr. Andola's property on the left across the South Street, which is a county road?
County.
Alright, so I think you might have to give county mob, because you have permits to put that drainage pipe underneath that road?
Do you think there were?
No. Not according to what Mr. Andola calls, so that's why.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I mean, trucker's probably the one who paid to get that done. Says building forever and ever.
You're not saying anything. I knew where you were going.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, but you know, it, it, it's a legitimate concern. I don't know, I'll dig into that. I'll, I'll call. It's running out of my head, the. Funny name, County DOT.
Yeah.
It's a funny name. I can't think of it.
Mike, I, I think it'd be a good idea for you to meet him out there, we're both property owners and say, because these guys would have to fight this out. I mean, it's not our issue. What's going to be there?
I'll fight it out.
That's just gonna be. Well, you gotta remember, because now you're crossing a county road.
Agreed.
And you got two different property owners, so you got three different owners in that bike.
And it's not going, if it's not going to be maintained, you're more concerned about the water that may grow on Andola's property onto the highway.
Yeah, so here's, here's the fun part for everybody that maybe Mr. Andola doesn't understand. Point source, water is of the person who generates it, it's responsible for it. So if that pipe clogs up. You look to the, you look to where the pipe daylight. Where the water comes into the pipe. That person. Is in trouble because the water's all now backing up. That person gets a snake in line. It is nothing to do with anybody else along there. The easement would be to allow another party to come onto the property. To repair or maintain or whatever you have to do. You know, we'll do, we'll make sure that there are clean outs installed if necessary. You know, having so many feet because snakes aren't only so long or jets are only so long. So, yeah, that's sort of a funny place, but I will check with the county. I'll meet, I can't think of the guy's name. It's a funny name too. He's been there for thirty five years.
You gotta remember, like, did I ask the question last month? There are no manholes on the property.
No.
So it's inlet. And outlet, so pipe ever clogs. I'm more worried about ever clogging up. South Street.
So to the public that's listening out there, it's always great to maintain regulations to your neighbors.
Yeah, it, it, my understanding, it is a concrete pipe, so it could be failing now. So, yeah, we'll, we'll see. I just wanted you guys to, I know there was a concern on the board that they came in. To kind of talk to me about, you know, what I thought they could do, went back to you. So I'm bringing those two pieces back to you before they do next week.
Anyone else have any questions, concerns? My bad, not here today.
I think we're probably pretty close with them.
Here we go.
Yeah. I, I would say we're just looking for. Conditions from CPL. If there's legal issues related to drainage, we want to know about them so we can require. Appropriate easements. So that's a conversation that I think that. Dave and CPL and our firm should have. We have a draft resolution that's been prepared, but. We're, we're really just trying to make sure we've got all the conditions and legal requirements covered.
I'll talk to him on Monday.
Is there any, and since the public hearing is open, is there anyone from the public that wants to speak? On behalf or against the project? Even in Zoom land?
Nope.
Anybody? Seeing none, okay?
Motion to adjourn. Steve.
What?
That was Dave.
Motion to adjourn?
No, Dave, sorry, buddy.
Next on the, is a short term rental, David Servino. Servini, I apologize. One fifty one Bellevue, I think we all walked out of this property at least once. It's Mr. Servini, huh?
Right there.
Yes, yeah.
You got it right.
There you go.
Sorry, I'm, I'm tech, I'm technically. Not able to turn off my, or put up my name on there. I don't know Zoom well enough to be able to change that.
That's all right. We know your, we know your face now. But you want to speak to it? I believe it was a short term rental you were looking to get done. And you had a lot of things need to be corrected, I agree on it, right?
Correct. So basically. We've been living at. One fifty one Bellevue Road for the past five, almost six years. I actually prepared a little statement because applying for the short term rental. I know that there are a lot of people who are in the area that aren't very big fans of it. There have been problems with it. Unfortunately, because of my situation at work. I've had to adapt my life and my business a little bit. And. I've spoken with my neighbors and all of my neighbors are very supportive. However, there is one neighbor that does have some concerns. Based upon previous experiences. So with this, I'd like to submit this for the record. Been living at. The inexpensive side of Bellevue Road for the last five years since two thousand and eighteen. I first came to the area twenty years ago. I came on a vacation. I fell in love with it. Nineteen years ago, I started a business. And part of that business, I bring people to the Hudson Valley. Mainly Poughkeepsie, New Paltz Highland, Kingston, Asopis. For little weekends, like hikes and things like that. It's always been my dream to live here, but when we had our baby five years ago. We were lucky enough to find the property on Bellevue Road. We have three point seven acres. There's four bedrooms, three bathrooms. It's about three thousand square foot house. As a matter of fact, a lot of local contractors, delivery people, and even some first responders. They come to our house and they comment on the beauty of the area, and they didn't even know that that part of Highland existed. Our house with the other houses that are on the shared road. It's kind of like a natural cul-de-sac and it's a really peaceful area. And since I was up here for work for almost nineteen years, almost every weekend. I felt like when I moved there, I moved home. And even before we bought the house, I shopped at Hannaford's, I bought meals at Honor Road, with the vignettes. Asia Garden, Pomodoro and the old Mariners. So I feel like I was a local before I even moved here. Unfortunately, COVID hit my business pretty hard and our events in the city haven't rebounded and. Because of changes in the New York State auto insurance laws. We haven't been able to rent the fifteen passenger vans that we used to bring people on heights to the culinary institute. To Burroughs property, to. The walkway, to Franny Reese, things like that. I can only bring up small groups, which has really hurt us and we're on the brink of closing down. Now, my wife, she's a physical therapist. And she recently received a special certification. To specialize in physical therapy that increases her ability to earn more. She was contacted by a company that was out of state. That can offer her a lot of money, and for a short period of time, we discussed. It would be more beneficial for us to, to move and her take that job. And me still try and work on building my business back up. Now, because of that. It would give us a chance, if we had a short term rental with the house. To be able to have the opportunity for me to go back to the house and still run the trips that I need to run. Occasionally. But also for us to be able to keep our house in Highland and cover some of the costs that are involved. We're asking that because. I'm aware that we have support from almost all of our neighbors. However, there is. A neighbor who is right next to us. Who has had previous owners of our house, especially with the property, used it as Airbnb. And before the new regulations that the town of Lloyd set forth. And in filling out my application, I added many amendments to the standard house rules. To specifically help ensure that the more priorities with the neighbors that have a concern but are supportive. Feel comfortable with our plan to have the house used as a short term rental to avoid any of the issues that happened previously. And you can see from the records, if you have them, that many of my neighbors are supportive of what we know. I know the risks of short term rental. I followed some of the stories from local houses. Even though I've been living there for five years, I consider myself somebody who's a local. I got there before COVID. I wasn't one of those people that came up. Because it was a trendy thing to do. I don't want my house to be used as a party house. I don't want it to be trashed. I don't want to be lumped into those other people that come up to the area that. Buy a house and then leave it empty all week. Because I want to come back to my house when we get ourselves more stable. Most of all, I want to come back to my neighbors who I have a great relationship with. Unfortunately, our current situation has taken us on a little detour. And I thank my neighbors who support us during the time, and I ask for your consideration in the short term rental.
Mr. Servini, I have a question for you.
Sure.
You just told us that the house is four bedroom?
It's, uh, it has four rooms, it could be four bedrooms.
Okay, according to the property record card, you're four, three bedrooms, three full bath, correct?
Three bedrooms, and there's a, what we use now, when, um, my wife moved out, we used the, the storage room in the basement where we, where, where to sleep, so I, I said that as a bedroom. That wouldn't be, wouldn't be used as part of the short-term rental. That's a storage room now.
Okay, so you're gonna maintain it as three bedroom?
Correct.
Okay.
Because then you're gonna have to amend your application, I believe.
Right.
The ten.
Yeah, cause you're looking for, that's, I think, yeah.
No, that room is storage now and it's locked.
Yeah, okay. Gentlemen, anything else? You have a sign also for the property?
No, I just, I wouldn't put a sign up. Do I need to?
Yes, you should have something stating that what the address number is so that, um, the people who are renting your property know where they're at to the most part.
Oh, uh, yeah, no, I have, we have, we have signs for the, the address, uh, on the road and on the shared room.
Okay, so, uh, just to clarify, um, the, the one that's on Bellevue indicates the number of the house. The one that's on the private shared driveway that leads back to your house across from the pond. Is there some sort of arrow or other designation saying you've arrived at our Airbnb?
There is a, there is a, an arrow, yes.
Okay.
Just could you have that shared driveway or road, I think it's a, a shared road, but not the same, and a goseer driveway?
Yep, it is.
Yeah, so we wanna make sure that nobody's going into the other neighbor's property and causing any issue.
Um, I've had many conversations with the neighbors regarding that.
Okay. And at the same time, how many car parking spots were there? Was there five? Is there over the ten?
So, there are two in the garage and then four in the main driveway, you can really fit, if you parked in the whole driveway, you could fit ten cars, but I, I think I limited it to four.
Okay. Yeah, that's important.
Some of the issues that they had in the past were that people were parking on the lawn and people were parking all over the place, but I, I specifically amended or added to the house rules that there were, uh, to be no more than six people and, um, I believe that I put four cars is the most.
Yes, we've got these as well there. Um, otherwise, anything else, very well. It sounds good, no outstanding code violations, it was a walk-through, it was good.
All good, yeah, that's on one of the sheets, yes.
Mm-hmm.
All right, David. All right.
Sure.
That's wonderful.
It's wonderful. Break time.
You go. At the age of all that work.
And, uh, my only can, thing is, uh, thank you for talking to you guys. They've talked into my phone, so you did appreciate that you involved all your names before you came here.
Yeah, we can go ahead and say it.
So there's all that, including from Moriarty, would be, Moriarty be, uh, unable to, as an issue? Is that correct?
Correct.
And they said they have someone.
Yes.
Lamros, anything, Tom, good? So we can move for a, uh, go ahead, Paul.
Oh, so my question, um, was the public hearing scheduled to open tonight?
Yes.
Yeah, so do you wanna open the public hearing then, Scott?
Let's do that, make the motion open a public hearing. Second. Home paper?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, public hearing's open, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on behalf or against the project? Even in Zoom land? Okay, we'll give that a, public hearing is, motion to close?
No, I, um, do you wanna?
You haven't been doing that, hold on one second, for the board, we hadn't been doing that, we were able to go through and close it on the same, in the workshop, yes. So, Paul, what were you gonna say now?
No, 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 I mean, it's entirely up to you guys, but if you wanted to, you could leave it open until next week and we could prepare a resolution for next week, um, in case anybody else shows up.
Okay, we'll do that, we'll leave it that way, so, um, we'll leave the motion, I mean, sorry, the public hearing open for next week and we'll go through from there.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
See you next week.
See you next week. So the next thing on the agenda is administrative business, Silver Gardens. Subdivision extension, your end up being much. The applicant is seeking a ninety-day extension of the subdivision approval. And I'm going to let Mr. Gerstein speak.
Hi, David, everyone, good, nice to see everybody again. Uh, it's been a long, long road. Longer I had been when I first started this, many years ago. Unfortunately, you got funded, but I had to save the tax credits, uh, which is a big hurdle. I've got a regular deal, built product of this nature. Uh, we had a meeting with the state, we're proposing, supposedly, uh, uh, November first. Unfortunately, our subdivision, uh, uh, permit, uh, does not allow us to wait to that time, we're here for a ninety-day extension. Probably need one more ninety day after this extension, because it carries beyond the November first day. Okay, we're asking for ninety days, second to that by subdivision.
Anyone else want to say, wanna speak to it? Christian, good day.
Yeah, I, I could, um, speak to this, um, the subdivision extension is kind of an administrative um, issue, and there's really no reason not to grant it, I mean, they've made the application. Um, it does sound like they're making good faith efforts to bring the project to fruition. So, um, my recommendation would be that we, uh, provide a resolution to the board for approval next week that would authorize the subdivision extension.
One of the board members were asking, can it be extended for one hundred and eighty days in that resolution?
Unfortunately, the, you know, the way the law is constructed, it only allows ninety-day extensions.
No issue, that's fine. I think we've had, it's kind of taken a little time. Oh, it's the same, well, what happened? Well, listen, there's no issue, same as the guarantee here in our, our board meetings. Uh, you're, you guys, they are getting behind, but anyway, and, you know, legality.
I'm using things.
Yes. Kind of, you know, ninety days. For, yeah. Yeah. So, we'll see, another ninety days, I'm sure. So, Paul, if you wouldn't mind doing that, please, uh, grant resolution so we can sign that.
We will, and I'm glad you guys are making progress.
Yes.
Well, actually, to Paul, uh, Mike Moriarty, I've been sending you a whole bunch of, uh, legality papers regarding these bits and, uh, uh, various other things regarding the town road.
Sean. I think it was going to Sean, was it?
Sean, I think. All right, Sean.
Yeah, no, 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 I, I have all this stuff from Mike. And, uh, it's one of the downsides of you guys making progress is it needs more work for Sean and me.
Hmm.
But we will do it, and we will do it happily, because.
And by that, Richard, he means billable hours.
He's had a big summer, I mean, before you. All right, so, um, so we'll wait for grant resolution, um, do we make a motion to do a grant resolution?
No, you'll, you'll, you'll just go it on next week.
I'll, I'll have it, I'll have it ready for you.
Thank you.
Paul. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Richard. Right there. Last but not least on the agenda is going backwards a little bit, and that would be the public hearings section, the villages. Um, we don't have anyone else here, did they, Brittany, did they tell you they weren't coming, or?
They are on their way, uh, Kelly is an ETA of seven oh three, um, I can start it if you want me to start it.
Yeah, you might wanna go tell, bring coffee and dinner for everybody.
Then it's seven oh five.
That's, uh, oh, most.
Dave and I could start it if you want.
Go ahead, let's, let, don't do me a favor, let's let Brittany speak around the heck of it right now. And then, with Dave's afterwards. You're gonna drag this now.
Oh my god.
Okay, let's, let's do it, Brittany, you're up.
Uh, does someone let me share the screen and then I can do a presentation?
Sure can.
Yeah.
Can I click on her?
All right, so, as you know, and, uh, this is the villages, um, we are back here to do the phasing of the villages, like the second phase. Um, we're gonna have, it's gonna be split up into a couple of different phases. You're gonna have the infrastructure going on and as well as the building. Um, the ALF portion of it is gonna be its own phase, we're still working through the permitting on Department of Health. So that's not gonna happen for, I think, until twenty twenty-five possibly, so all this other, um, buildings are hopefully gonna happen before then. Um, we're gonna someone say something? Nope, um, so, we're gonna get into the first phase of the project, which is gonna possibly, it's gonna include twenty-one units. Um, you're gonna include the water pump house, which is up in here. Uh, there's gonna be all the outdoor recreation area, the sales office is gonna be relocated. You're gonna have a portion of Healthcare Center Lane and a portion of Peach Lane. And with that, you're gonna have all the water, storm, all the utilities to go along with it, as well as a couple of the walls that are gonna be needed to go into the Healthcare Center Lane and Peach Lane. Um, then you're gonna move into Phase B, um, which is gonna include forty-one units. Again, finishing up a portion of Healthcare Center Lane. You're gonna do a portion of Cherry Lane, and then you're gonna have as, the infrastructure to go along with it as well. Keeping in mind that, um, going from Phase one, uh, A to Phase B, we're never gonna have more than five acres of disturbed land, it's always gonna be seeded and stabilized as we go. Going on to Phase C is when you're gonna, um, do the construction of the clubhouse. You're gonna finish the loop of Healthcare Center Lane. It's also gonna include, um, seventeen, uh, units over in here. Um, as well as additional, um, infrastructure, you're gonna have additional walls, you're gonna finish the wall eleven that's over here and the grading that's gonna be needed. Uh, Phase D, you're gonna move back into the back of the property. Um, this is where you're gonna, you're gonna have thirty-six different units coming in, you're gonna include the sanitary pump station that's gonna be back in the back corner. Um, you're gonna have, again, all the sanitary storm. Um, you're gonna, there was a, uh, emergency access drive, which is shown here in red that will be constructed and it will continue all the way through to be able to provide access back here. And then your Phase E is gonna be fifty-seven units as you're moving closer towards the storage, uh, units. Um, so it's gonna be fifty-seven units, another, uh, retaining wall, you're gonna have Concord Court. Um, and then that's, you're gonna continue your emergency access all the way through. The last phase of it is going to be Phase F. Now, the reason that we're not doing this sooner, because this area in here is gonna be used for staging of units, staging of materials, um, and other items as the construction process moves through. Once all of those units are built prior to this phase, then this will be converted into the actual units themselves. And that's kind of the phasing of this area, is there any questions?
Yeah, can you open the full map of all of it, please?
Yep.
So again, only because I'm, I'm kind of just going on this one a little bit, when is the ALF going in?
Uh, as soon as we get all the permitting going forth, that's gonna be hopefully twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
And what we were doing, that was one with Phase A originally.
So to be precise, um, Brittany, it's Dave Barton, uh, well, we had a conversation with the applicant, uh, last week. Uh, very productive, uh, we got some good ideas out of it and gave them some good ideas as to, um, how to set this up and then how to present it to you. Um, the, there's a couple of things that, uh, and Kelly can probably do this much better than I can, and maybe Brittany can as well. Uh, Phase A, um, all the, uh, sort of grading stuff will go to Phase B and then to Phase C. The reason why, uh, our thinking now, Paul and I, um, uh, uh, you know, we, we chatted with them for quite a long time, um, A, B, and C, get us to the clubhouse. Now, I'm suggesting, and I'm gonna, you know, advise the board that if we're starting to create communities up here, getting to the clubhouse is important. Cause it'll be a central place for people to be. Phase A will include, uh, some, um, recreational items. But Phase C is the clubhouse, and that's gonna be, you know, sort of a, a major hub. I think for, you know, seniors to, you know, get together, whatever. Um, so, we're thinking now that if we get to, uh, A, B, and C, and then have a full stop until the ALF is underway, before they can move on. That helps them in terms of the number of units, because again, remember, they'll only be able to do Phase A before they can get to Phase B and then get to Phase C. Ideally, we hope they'll sell fast enough that by the time we get to C, the ALF will be ready, permitted, and ready to be under construction. Um, we did talk about only doing, you know, one small phase, but you know, and, and their, their argument was, you know, financially, that's not gonna serve. Um, he spent, uh, Mr. Stinson spent a million dollars on one retaining wall, we saw photos of it. It's breathtaking, but it's a million dollars, and it's already on site. So in order to get sort of some better ROI, because remember, he's still gonna be holding for the ALF. Oh, damn. Motion to adjourn. So, uh, you know, he'll still be holding. Giving him more units to continue on in order to, you know, not have to hold for so long, will get us to the ALF quicker. Part B, um, and Kelly can speak of this, is we may advise that the board, uh, since all they'll be doing at first, possibly, uh, and Kelly will definitely speak to this directly, um, is do the infrastructure pieces first, the light will have to be part of that.
Right, all right, are you done?
I was just swinging it till Kelly showed up.
Apparently, Sally drove up empty-handed, Brittany didn't get the message through either, so now we're all hungry and thirsty, though. So my only question here is, that we originally spoke about this, and it was about having a, a bit of skin in the game. And that being said, uh, what I mean is, the ALF was part of, we wanted it, it's part of A. And it was, um, conveyed to us that they felt that that was a good idea because they would show good faith in at least that starting. Not getting fifty percent of the, of the, um, what we call the cottages built. It appears that it's almost fifty percent. And then starting the ALF, which really is not where we wanna be, I mean, that's my opinion of this, I'm gonna let the rest of the board speak for it too. But I really think that we really have to have something happening at the ALF. I just.
Agreed.
I agree. And my, at the left, who, where we got twenty twenty-five, and so we get to the ALF.
I can kind of go through for that position of hers, so about six months ago, we wanted to design the ALF so that we, of a portion of the ALF, being required Department of Health approval. And, um, that was something that the board really didn't wanna see, that they wanted to have that ALF in its entirety. Provide the services that were, uh, mandating the Department of Health approval. And so we reverted back to having an entire building to be public at the Department of Health. We'd love to go build building tomorrow, but we can't. So we're encumbered by, um, Department of Health approval process. There was nothing we could do, nothing to do to try to force that process sooner than later, and so to keep the target moving forward, obviously, the cottages are just as important to community. People like us in the ALF is, and, you know, if we could win the magic wand, we certainly would, but we're trying to keep the project moving forward and under construction.
You're gonna have to visit Hogwarts because you're gonna need one hell of a magic wand, I remember the owner saying it's gonna take three years for the project. But we're starting an ALF in two thousand and five.
Twenty-five.
Well, when I, when I had shown, uh, twenty twenty-five on that, um, chart that I could prepare, I don't know how many, I'm, I'm Well, when I, when I had shown uh, twenty twenty-five on that um, chart that I could prepare, I don't know how long, I'm I'm not a Department of Health person. I don't know how long this is gonna take.
And we understand your point.
Better than I do, and I just thought as far as a perspective, um, place twenty twenty-five on there. I can tell you that the infrastructure is there, I can tell you that the grading has been completed, we took every effort, I mean, we would not have spent millions of dollars preparing that location to have it sit, and so it's it's our goal to still be able to first. But to cause the entire balance of the project to be delayed, because it's still requiring Department of Health approval, I think isn't a service to the project, isn't it?
Let's go back a little bit, what has the Department of Health told you so far, I mean, we've talked about this numerous times, we're hoping that they would have had some leadway going into making this happen a little faster, where are we at?
I think it's probably like this as much as I have here, not providing any information as far as how long that process will take, I I have no information, Bill, about your.
Anybody in particular who you're corresponding with, name on a piece of letterhead?
Yeah.
Anybody, the health department, producer writing?
Yeah, I have, I actually have a very solid relationship with the um, acting uh, director for the Department of Health, uh, nursing homes, assisted living, yada, yada. Um, the, she finds it impossible to speak to a length of time uh, without knowing the completeness of the application. It's just like when they come to me for billing permit, if you're missing a piece of paper, I'm gonna send it back to you until I get that piece of paper and then we can move on. Uh, so she's hesitant, uh, it could be, i- it's not gonna be less than a year.
And we should really have something from them saying, you have this, and this is the holdup, we had not, it's like just like DOT. We have like a DOT either, you know, and so who we have corresponding with DOT, and what is their holdup? A name or a piece of paper, or this is, so it's like a DOT, and neither my problem with it, or we're working on this and.
So I, I, I'm seeing frustration, I know, but you have an understanding of that, we're dealing with the government, and your supervisor of your town is on every communication to DOT. Your supervisor is pushing, you know, as hard as he can to get this DOT permit, he has much more leverage than I do in pushing this.
Well, I understand, I worked for government all my life, I I feel your pain.
He is the pain.
Yes. Everything is is documented, you must correspond to somebody, put their name on a piece of paper, you have my issue with this.
Absolutely.
So I would, I'd like to have that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, I I think that we can ask.
There are dozens and dozens of of emails back and forth.
Yeah, and and. It's pretty to the information, I can only tell you what DOT tells me. And every time I tell you something, it doesn't happen, and but I I'm as frustrated as you are. The last conversation that we had with Lance, um, from DOT, with the supervisor on the doing of these zooms with everyone present, was uh, Lance was coming back on vacation last week, he came back on vacation. Uh, he's been given all the information that he asked for, he confirmed that he has all the information. He said it would be at least two or three weeks before he'd be ready to issue the permit. We went ahead and got him updated to the piece of insurance, to make sure that the bond was correct, there was another piece of insurance that they wanted, all of that information we brought into them. We're getting to the point where we're asking him so many times that we're worried that we're going to annoy him, but we keep asking and asking him. Um.
Well, you see, our problem now is just suppose you don't get these permits. And I see, is that an access to have a link to the doctor?
No, that's a water line.
Okay, whatever, alright, but getting back to the thing, it's supposed to location permits. Now you're gonna claim hardship and you're building something that really, really, really voted for, because the bulk of it is now can't get approved?
So as far as, I mean, I I can sit here, we weren't put on the line, so I'm sure you know the process, um. Lance from DOT is gonna give us that we are going to receive the permit, in fact, in one email that he added the supervisor on, and he said, um, that he thinks that the permit would be issued if they were asking the timeframe, then it would be issued, and he said two or three weeks. And in anticipation of that, he said to us, get all of your certificates updated, make sure the bond is correct, so please make sure that all of that information is complete. So when I issue the permit, those things aren't.
You have to see our side too, I mean, going on years now, it's like ground out there. I don't think I have DOT, I ain't got a health one.
We, we.
I don't, and and now you're talking all of this up here, and it, there's a problem there.
But but this, these cottages and these independent living units, in my opinion, are just important to the community as the other left is.
Well, they're not, you know, it was all tied to the ARF, the medical, the well-being of these people that might not ever happen.
And it might, you know, and it might, and.
But right now, it looks like it's not, I've been going years, I'm still gonna get that one.
We've had conversations with Department of Health, Dave Byrne, you've been on the call, I mean, I think you could provide a better input of whether or not you can, if this is a a formidable project, um, John's first.
John first.
Join the meeting.
That it is a formidable process or project, and it's a matter of making the submission to the.
So the um, the light had to be approved, that had to be forwarded off to the Department of Health, and they're expecting us to give you approvals in order for them to determine whether or not that they can give you the permit for the um, sorry, the Department of Health part of this, so our problem is, excuse me one second, but our problem is that, is exactly that. We can't give you a permit without knowing that this is really what you're gonna do.
And I think that that's the reason why we've had your office, we've had Dave Byrne and Dave Klevichak on the call with both of these entities to give you the assurances that these permits are coming.
We needed a way of being over the last couple of years and trying to accommodate the the applicant into having this done, this is where the water gets muddy, and then we're not remembering exactly what was done, how it was coming about. And the reason why I'm saying that, because this, this, this in my opinion, this has changed from what we discussed the last time, which you already can see that, with degree. Cause we asked to have that um, certainty of starting the ALF along with.
And we want to start it.
I I, listen, your intention is, is extremely clear to me, I got it, but it's still, um, you know, our part of the job is, is to make sure that what we are asking is what we're gonna get.
And and we want, you know, I don't want it to sound that we flip flopped and flip flopped, so. Build that ALF to do the upper portion, and there was a lot of discussion amongst the town, and that the expectation for that, that the services in that building predicated the uh, permit from the Department of Health. And so we redesigned the entire project, and we've uh, included all of those services, we provided you the footprint, so that all of those services are required to be certified and approved by the Department of Health.
We're gonna break the scenario to you, here's what we have. We go with three phases constructed, and let's just say you're only building based on what you sell, which is really what's gonna happen ultimately, right? The cottage.
Well, that's all that we have approval for, and that's all that we can sell.
So, I'm trying to figure out, best way to say this, so we're looking for a more, ah, how can you say, creative way of starting the project to get so many sold. Because the only way you can sell them is if you have a project that's been approved, right? So approving the project and saying, yes, go ahead with what you have here, but you're only allowed to sell, or you only were able to sell fifty percent. Where does that leave us now?
Well, that was the last conversation that we had with the board, was come up with some creative way to set milestones and constraints, so that you can't get ahead of yourself, and that that ALF is incorporated into the project, and that's what we're assuming is the plan.
And that's why we, and and Kelly, I'm not trying to be difficult, I really am, but that's why we wanted to incorporate the ALF at the same time.
I would.
In one of those phases, I I don't.
I think we're both saying something.
We we are, we are, you have your interest and your responsibility to it, and we have ours.
And I.
So I'm only conveying to you what I thought we were gonna be doing, and now we.
Meeting that we discussed some way to allow some portion of the cottages to be built, knowing that we were in the process of getting approval.
I mean, I'm I'm a hundred percent, I agree, but I'm just telling you our responsibility, so community, making sure we don't get too far ahead of it. And and let's say for financial reasons, sorry, Dave, for financial reasons, you can't build any more than fifty percent, and that ALF isn't gonna happen.
That we can't build more than fifty percent.
If you don't sell fifty percent of the cottages.
So, uh, I'm sorry, a- and I don't mean to interrupt, but but I think we're, you're both speaking to the same point. Um, Scott is looking for, I think, for the board, um, you know, a process that, you know, uh, we've talked to the applicant about, about um, doing piecemeal approvals across the entire project. Um, and so let's just hypotheticalize here that the board feels comfortable with the layout of the site. Okay, and all the, you know, but bugs, bunnies, and flowers are all ha- everybody's good on the site, and we can, you know, so let's just say that that uh, you guys say, yes, we're comfortable with the whole site. Uh, we're gonna let you do the infrastructure and cottages for A. And then you get to come back. And we'll do B. Same review.
I I.
Does everybody have this?
Great idea, the way that works.
But, so what, so what that'll do is that'll limit them. Um, you know, to get to, get to A, no guarantee that they can go to B based on what I said, I mean, I, I sort of think that at least A and B are are good places to get community started, um, again, I I think C is a better place as well, because the, you know, the community center is there. Um, you know, other, other amenities, so long story short, it it is possible, and I'll let Paul, um, Kelly a- and John speak to this better, um, i- is to do it piecemeal, uh, and we checked, uh, Paul checked, and it's it's a legal way to do it. Um, but it's gonna be up to you guys to decide, you know, does the phasing work in in terms of the number of units, and one, one of the reasons why I think the way it does is um, this is a simple work. Right, uh, there are certain walls that have to go in before another piece can go in, and you know, Kelly's much more um, competent with this than I could ever be. So uh, you know, if you have questions on that, that's the place to go. But again, you could, I mean, the the first phase A is twenty-one units. And it doesn't, the impact isn't especially onerous to this town to get twenty-one. Um, forty-one, we're now up to sixty-two. And maybe at that point, I mean, I I think it's optimistic, um, the way they uh, the the dates you put on there, good for you. Um, but uh, you know, because infrastructure is gonna come before it. Alright, so anyway, I I I'm just putting that to that, you know, in your mind, I think you need to get as a board comfortable with the conceptual plans. And then as you, if you're comfortable with that, get into the A, B, C, D, E, uh, pieces.
Right.
Because C, I'm sorry, I'm not comfortable, because we keep going around and around and around. And it's the same issue over and over again, you keep building, and then you're spending a hardship, could you say millions of dollars for a wall, or whatever you're doing up there? You know, it's a permit, you know, what'd you say you're gonna build? Done with it. That's just my personal, nothing against you, I'm not, you don't take it personal, I mean, it's it's not personal, it's just, we've been doing this for years. And I'm not comfortable with it, just be personal, I'm not talking personally, what you're talking about.
I mean, my concern is that, you know, these cottages are being sold with the assumption that there's gonna be an ALF within our, whatever, a certain reasonable amount of time. And you know, today, I think it was a big shock for all of us to hear that, we're not gonna get a Department of Health any movement on that until a year after the next.
You need a hundred percent. Package a hundred percent for approval, or anyone will sit on a desk. I've been involved with a lot of these projects, so no, like Dave said earlier, cause if he's papers missing, he'll say, oh yeah, he's not ready yet.
And like I.
So unless you have a hundred percent of that project ready to move, they will not move on, I've been involved in a lot of these projects.
And they won't give you, they won't give you a letter saying, no, or anything like that, if you're saying, they won't do it, right?
I think the sense that is like, it's sort of a puzzle, you need both of them together, you can't sell just one or the other with some, you know, savings of the future that you may or may not have.
Still would have to assume three years later, you still don't have this stuff. Well, chances are, you're not gonna get this stuff.
I mean, my other concern is that.
That's not true.
It's, it might not be true, I might be wrong, but we don't know, because we still don't have it, it's been going on every month.
Well, nobody, like I said, nobody will review it, correct person, unless you got a hundred percent of the passes there.
Kelly, you approve?
Question I have.
Approve.
Yeah, cool, yes, can we flip that phasing around, because it looks like, can we flip Phase C and B? Because if you build the wreck, people will come.
Yeah, we can, there's, as uh, David said, the reason that that um, the phasing were created was a lot of infrastructure that had to occur. Um, also, in order to ensure that trucks were in providing past residents' houses or infrastructure, so we can, we can look at that, I mean, that's definitely.
That is gonna be my suggestion.
And then the clubhouse will get.
He led, he led to the uh, understanding that really the clubhouse was something that needed to be there, and specifically for the sale. So I don't know how many was in B, how many rooms are there in B, uh, cottage, forty-one?
Forty-one.
And then it was seventeen in C, if I'm not mistaken, and I understand that the quantity you need to get in order for finance to keep going and everything else, but I think if you swap B with C, as Frank said, that may help, but again.
And then the people will be happy up there, they got some place to go, they're gonna, they're not excited about that.
Yes, so that's, and and my, I just, just because of the ALF, and I understand you can't do anything with it till you get the Department of Health approval, I got it, I mean, I just, I I feel like I beat a dead horse. But it's where we were with a good understanding.
I feel like I missed beating.
Talking to me, and I'm like.
I don't know where this came from, I thought that it was discussion about an upper and lower ALF. One part of it needed help, one did not, still going forward with the one that didn't need it, and that it would be.
No.
Okay, last month.
One time, one time.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Six, six months ago, things changed, I thought last month we were still on that, I was under the impression we were weeks, months away for approval. Directly from law.
Yeah, so we, we weren't like, we're expecting any, any day now with the DOT and the Health Department.
Correct, so. Can't go, but what what happened was, so a couple of months ago, we were talking about an, an upper and lower portion of the building, where the lower portion didn't need Department of Health approval, I'm sorry, the upper portion didn't, Department of Health approval, but the lower portion did. We've changed that, because um, I think we had some further discussions with town, the entire building is is going to seek Department of Health license for assisted living, so.
Me.
Okay, Dave, I think you guys had expressed it in some of the meetings as well, the supervisor.
I didn't, the first I heard.
So the entire ALF is going to.
The ALF is being pushed to the, to the end, to the middle.
Well, it's something, it's, we're not, we're not pushing it, it's just where the expectation is, once the application is filed, which will be soon, uh, a couple of outstanding items, it's gonna take a while, so my understanding of what I've been told by Ron DeVito, it's really not a question of if, it's just a question of when. That's what I've been told.
And and we would love to be able to give you that piece of proof, but we can't.
And I'm gonna say, we would love to give you approval, but we can't. We need to know the community is not going to have, or be burdened with a hardship that later they come to us and say, we can't get the permit, and now we're stuck, but we have all these cottages up there, that's gonna be a problem.
And that would mean the entire project would come to a halt.
Well, I'm just saying what I know, and and listen, I've tried to be as creative, along with understanding of your direction or where you want to go, and I believe the board has. But at this stage, I'm looking at that, and that's not what we read upon at the two meetings ago, I believe, or was it two months ago at a meeting? And I realize it's not with the intent of your, the applicant, I understand, it's not. But but that's where we are now, so where we are now is me having the same understanding of we cannot in perfect say, here you can have this without that.
But a couple of.
Scott.
We talked about.
Can I jump in?
The phasing plan is wonderful, but you included in one of the phases, the construction of A. And we have a board here that all remembers that way, Kelly. So.
Right.
Go ahead, Paul.
Yeah, yeah, so, I mean, the way that uh, Dave and Andy and I have looked at it, coming away from prior con- conversations with the board, is that, um, you know, we all recognize that there was a need to, a- and it's a good need, you know, because the applicant has reverted to a position where they're going to seek DOH approvals for the entire assisted living facility. And that'll help to make this um, consistent with with the PRRD that was approved by the town board. And so the question became, okay, how do we allow the applicant to proceed with some development? You know, because they have a contractor on site, for example, who's gonna leave. And and so they'd like to keep that contractor engaged, because the, you know, the um, cost of bringing a person back is, you know, it's it's pretty substantial, and they've also invested in these retaining walls. So the idea that we were looking at and talking with them was that if they did certain phasing, if if the planning board allowed them to do certain phases of the project, and then at some point, there was a stop, because. Because. Unless the ALF goes forward, you don't have a PRRD. You know, then. The, that would be a, a, a good way for the planning board to control the process. And to make sure that the ALF is done, you could also include a condition. That. You know, at some point in the process. The stoplight down at Meyer Drive. Has to be approved. And potentially even installed. Before they can do more work. But, you know, again, it's kind of like taking the concerns that the planning board has had. And trying to balance them against the practical realities that the applicant is facing. And come up with a phasing plan. That, that works. But doesn't. Lose control. Of approval. Of the details of the design. Um. You know, by the planning board. So that's kind of how we've been talking with the applicant and I'm sorry if we've missed something. But it seems to me like that's kind of like the balance. That, that would allow the project to continue forward, but would ensure that the project is done. The way the planning board intends.
Paul. Why would we get ourselves entangled with? Infrastructure they did before they got the permits? They created their own hardship. Why would we want to get involved? In creating a way out and leave ourselves vulnerable? For something that might never get built?
You, you just, you, you need to cover that in the approval documents. And be clear that whatever they do. Um, to, you know, like. The installation of those walls, they've got a contractor on site. We're talking about like two million dollars worth of walls.
He's talking too many, a million there, that's really not, I, I mean, I, I feel for them, but they're the ones that caused this problem. For starting something that they didn't have all the permits for. If you're like, we need a house, not having all the permits for your house. And put the house up by your lot, but you never have all your permits, and then the building inspector can buy it says. Got your house in wrong spot, this is wrong, it's actually wrong.
Yeah, and, and ultimately, Jerry, 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 so like I hear that. And that's like a policy call by the planning board. You know, because you, um, let me, let me just, let me finish real quickly. Because you have an applicant that is in front of you. That is saying. We can't do it otherwise, the project may fail. You know, and, and if there are ways. That you can control the project, if you want the project. If the planning board wants the project. If there are ways that you can. Let me, let me just finish, if there are ways that you could control that. Through the phasing. And through conditions of the project. Without risk putting the town at risk. Then. You know, that's another option for you all, but, but it is, it is entirely your discretion. If you want to put this off until every detail. Every aspect of the project has been approved. That's entirely your prerogative. But, you know. Let the applicant speak to what the risk of that might be.
I agree, I'm only one person. It's just my, my.
And I'm, I'm not, I don't take a position on it, you know, I'm just like telling you the options.
Kellie, I got a question for you. Start phase A, where, where are we looking?
You mean time?
Time.
We would like to start phase A immediately. And it's about two months, three months for us to get, um. That same project with infrastructure road and the goal being to start setting houses there in October and then that's our goal.
Okay, so this is a lot more than that.
If you build phase A, you build phase C. You can limit your construction equipment. Either this way. If you flop these two around, this is all completed, the way your construction will look out of it. You can run this way.
You get it.
Involve this way.
And.
Right. You build this, these people start buying down here. Word of mouth will spread. Probably go to this phase, that phase, but that's what I'm looking at, you gotta, because right now, the way you got it, you're gonna build phase A, but then. To get to phase C, you gotta have construction to put it through a bill, and you're gonna tear it while you're on it.
Yep.
So why not just flip these two, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Does that make sense to you guys?
Well, that is what we talked about.
Right.
That's not the issue. That's not the issue.
I understand. What, what, what you're trying to do is say. When you build this.
Yeah.
The people will come.
Yeah, but, hold on a second. As far as what planning board goes, listen, I want to say this. The planning board doesn't care whether or not they come.
Right.
We would like it to come, they'll get, or some of us would like it to come, that's not what I'm saying. But we can't control that, that's not on us.
Right.
So my point, the point I'm trying to make. Approving that whole lot right there is what will get them their ALF. Department of Health approval faster. Alright, saying that? But now we approve it all, it's yours. The phasing we can control by what's going on in each one of those. Phase areas and how we want it to be, uh, done, and what we're expecting in each one of those phases. Stop me if I'm wrong.
You're right.
Alright.
There's only two of those stages, you don't have.
If we do, hold on a second, hold on a second.
There's issue, Paul.
So having that done, you get to C, how long are we talking each of those phases to be finished?
To get to C?
Let's say, C and B, C and B, because A, C and B, because that's what we're looking.
Spring of twenty twenty-four. So C is spring of twenty twenty, so we should block them.
So I'll ask this, this would be me. So let's say the Department of Health get your approval when we ever, if we do. Um, decide you get it, you go to the Department of Health, they're reviewing it, now they have everything they need. And John, you said they had a couple of things still that they need, itemize and let us know what those are. Then you got your approval, they go, and now the Department of Health looks at that and they say, okay, the ALF can be started. Now we're not looking at twenty twenty-five.
Right.
Will you start ALF?
As soon as possible, that's, that, that's it.
I think that will make some of us a little better knowing that that's what we'll start. And that way you have some skin in the game and we know we're getting something of what we want.
Right, and we can't control directly the corruptions of the license to the ALF, that's why.
Agreed, it was.
Agreed, that is, that's what I'm saying. Where it could go after B, it could go after C, it could be D.
It could be right after A.
It could be right after A, it's right.
So. Are there more people who review it? It's tomorrow.
That's right, so, and we understand your, the block that you're having with that, I mean, look, I go with that state all the time. So I got, I, I do, and, and we're not trying, I'm not trying to be a negative man here. I'm just looking that we have to have. You have to have an equal skin in the game as we do.
Uh, we understand that. We do, and we want to talk to you about how we can get to that, but we also do believe to your point, Jerry, that we think that the cottages are equally important to the community. And there's a need for those housing types, just in.
And I'm gonna stop you there for a second, and the reason why we're concerned with that is. If a hardship happens, a financial hardship happens, and you can't go any further, we're stuck with cottages. See where I'm going with that? That's what I don't want to see. And I, I don't know if you can guarantee it, put in writing, fellas, you're gonna build an ALF, provided you get that. But the thing is, we don't want to get one hundred houses up there and have to deal with that.
That's why we proposed the phasing, where you have the control mechanism at each phase.
You know, sorry, it's like.
Yeah, we, yeah, we got the control of it, but we don't have the control of, know whether the ALFs. And that, that's a little hard.
And, and, Dave, I have a question. I know before we had talked about, we said, you know, when we, we're gonna do pushbacks, we're trying to see something, but. I, I remember hearing, you know, we're not gonna issue a building permit unless we have that, like, deal, that DOT light put in. But you can, you can, you know, is that hard, you can issue building permits, like they could come in tomorrow.
I can issue building permits for what you approve.
Okay.
That's all.
Okay.
Those, those would all be conditions of approval. Potentially.
Right.
You know, I mean, you guys can control that to the extent that you want to.
And as far as the, this, the sequencing and construction, I don't, I understand succession, so if the point were issued within the next few weeks, we're going to. We're advancing, so then also the lower limit, so everyone under contract and working, with the poles and the signal box. Are the lower limits. Um. DOT generally stops, you can let, allow me to work, pay the DOT right away, whoever reports, plus on my next week, it's the weather.
Yeah, of course, the nine.
So what we can do is, what we're trying to do is that all of the underground work done before the map, so we've made the poles, so they know for the fact we've already done all the. The motivation, the, the ener bolts and so forth, so that we can set the poles whenever the poles come in. The signal box will get the, the, um, cavity prep, so when the signal box come in, we can put it in, even if it's in January or December.
Twenty-seven.
So we can continue the construction of the lighting, so our goal is to try to get all of that underground work done as soon as we get the permit. While we're waiting for the poles and then, um, signal box.
Okay. I'll go with that.
Bill?
My only question is.
Oh, you're not, you know.
If you get into phase C and you're done building and we say, no more building for the ALF, that's, that's your understanding?
If that's what the board is.
That's why we make sure we have that element to stop, to stop the shadow of the building.
At any phase of construction, we will be able to stop it if we're not getting what we want. And that's, we, we will be written in the resolution, right, Paul?
Yep.
Okay, that's kind of a little better. So. I don't know, anybody else? Paul? If you're quiet, then. I miss you, buddy. Derek? The issue. Okay, so we're gonna review this a little bit more, or we'll see at the next meeting, I guess, I, I don't know, is there anything else you want to speak about, anything else to add?
I need any updates?
Yeah.
All I can tell you is you have to be engaging. And we're gonna start capturing them again one day. You got four, four, you all being else, and everything will.
There are lots.
We'll answer back.
Yeah, okay.
I just said one minute regarding the phasing. You, uh, gave us your approximate by also for phase A, you said sometime in October, did that take in for town? The two and three weeks? Yeah, as per your discussion with Lance Borney regarding the approval, the DOT approval for that sample?
So A is A, we have to talk about what that condition is, and what, and how, um, the start of that A, this condition of getting DOT for all that stuff. So now, and the twenty seven, which is next meeting, we'll return to DOT again in terms of you as much as we can work for the communication exactly to your opposition.
Scott?
Go ahead, Paul.
Yeah, um, I'd like to hear, um, a little bit more from the applicant regarding the urgency of, um. You know, their timing and, and, you know, the reasons for that.
Um, Paul, the urgency for to continue this center?
Yes.
Of course. Um.
Yep.
The largest wall, Brittany, maybe you can point to, uh, wall eleven. So the largest wall on the project is wall number eleven. And Brittany showing that where that wall is up there, it's kind of the basis of, as you're walking your way up the hill. You know, you don't want to share this, but that wall is one point six million dollars and, um, we have contracted with L H P to prepare that wall, mostly because. If we read it, we're gonna be getting the wall in some of them. And, um, we paid for fifty percent of that wall, and so we are hoping to get that wall on site and try to continue some of that infrastructure. While we get onto the weather, and that will allow us then to start, um, bringing houses and, uh, structures on phase A.
And what is the status of your contractor?
So, um, our contractor is running out of work in another two weeks, so at that point, and you know, you can spend it on, you can, you can, on the long side. Um, they're gonna be out of work and so they'll de-remodelize at that point, they'll continue doing the work that's in the way of the team that's assembling the wall will leave. And, you know, we'll have to wait till we can figure out when we're even before we do that, so our hope is to be able to continue the infrastructure. The water and sanitary, we're just keeping a lot of people busy, um, it's keeping the staff and the town very busy. Um, it's keeping the sector's busy and it's keeping a lot of people busy on that side, and so we'd love to be able to continue that infrastructure, the water, sanitary, uh, and wall.
Uh, I'm just gonna throw this out there, uh, their contractor, Corwood, I wish it was the contractor, uh, for, for all these huge, huge projects. Um, you know, after Charlie, of course. Uh, because I might go front of Charlie doing a day, but, um, yeah, Corwood's been great to work with, uh, they've been very responsive, if ever there was a problem on site. They were right on it, um, usually I call Kelly first and she cracks it with. But then they're right on it, I mean, they could have seen information that we need as quick as possible, so. Um, that, I'm just putting it out there that losing Corwood, um, you know, because if they demop. Um, and go away and they can't come back and they have to get somebody else, it may. Um, you know, make me greater than I am now, so.
And that site, there are all these incredible arrangements that we've all had. That, um, was stable, anyone who applied looked at it, and that was intense, and, and we had a lot of brain. Um, so they did a fantastic job.
Ready a year ago?
Yeah. Good point.
Yeah, that was, if everyone you're on was a year ago, it was DOT's issue that Corwood turned. So.
It's not, yeah, same old point of figuring you, the reasons with.
Don't get me wrong.
Yeah, Kelly, Kelly was on it that night. Yeah. The, the only reason I bring that up is, it's relevant to the board's consideration of how it wants to proceed. Um, I think we feel comfortable as staff. That if you want to. Um, work with the applicant relative to phasing and to, um, allow the construction to continue to proceed. We can come up with resolutions and conditions that would allow that. To happen. Uh, without giving up anything to, uh, you know, giving up any of the town's interests. Um, but we certainly also appreciate the town's concerns. About making sure that the entirety of the project is reviewed. Um. You know, there's different ways we can approach it, we can approach it on a phased basis. You know, because there are a lot of details, and I've talked with Andy Learn about this. There's a lot of details that go with each phase that they are proposing. And one of the options that we've talked about. Is, um, providing an overall approval, but then requiring, uh, detailed phased. Review. Of each phase of the project. Um, and then also including conditions. That would require. Installation of the traffic signal and or DOT approvals. Um, and also making sure. Of course, and most importantly, that the assisted living facility is. Um, you know, underway is approved and underway. Uh, before. You know, the bulk of the residential. Um, development, the independent, independent living units are authorized to be constructed. So there's different ways we can approach this, and it's entirely up to the board on what you feel comfortable with.
Okay. Give us a little, uh, time to talk about and discuss this. Let me know what we were, we were approaching, obviously, it's a little bit more to consider, it's every time you guys come in here. So we sound to consider different ones, so. And yeah, nicely.
I think that, I'll take that as a compliment. Trying to advance, since we're the first project.
Yes.
Alright, we understand the things, I don't want to sound that we don't, and we really want to contribute a bit of, I use it more than time, but like, for whatever, this one has been great and the town has been great, so to get said that. We've heard our concerns, we've heard your concerns, and that we might be able to meet somewhere in the middle. True.
Great, Dave?
Just one more thing, uh, I gave you all a copy of the memorandum that I did related to cul-de-sacs, please review that. I'm happy to have conversations with, with you about it. Um, I think it's brilliant. Uh, and, and maybe it should be framed or, or put into a book or something, but it's, um, it's sort of satisfied. Because you wrote it? Oh my god. Yeah, I wrote, yeah, somebody had to write it, so, uh, so, uh, it, it does satisfy. Yeah, I think, um, yeah, I'm terrible. I, I do think that, uh, you know, that the cul-de-sac issue in this instance, um, in terms of length of road is not an issue. Uh, cul-de-sacs, uh, uh, and I'll just do a pre-say of, of the memo, uh, cul-de-sacs function very well, uh, when we don't have water. Um, hydrants, uh, so you, there's a limited amount of holes that a truck can carry, a fire truck can carry. And I've, I've rolled those five inch lines and it's, uh, one of the. Most exhausting things you can do, it's, it's worth the fight, at the end of a fire, it's worth the fighting fire. Um, so, uh, in this instance, there are hydrants throughout the project. Um, so, cul-de-sac won't trigger, you know, won't trip through for, um, you know, fire departments. Another reason why cul-de-sacs are short, uh, is for, it allows people to get up to speed. Um, but these are sixty-two and up. And, and golf carts, so I'm guessing we're not gonna see, you know, a lot, a lot of, uh, Lenny's. Up there with the suit up cars, uh, dragging down in the street. Um, maybe we will, uh, he's looking at me like, yes, we will. Uh, so there, uh, there, there's a couple of reasons there why I think that, that in this instance, like, again. It. I don't think you can apply the standards, private roads. Um, it's not a subdivision, it, it's a, it's a different.
If, I don't think you can apply the standards, private roads. Um, it's not a subdivision. It's a, it's a different kind of community. Um, so, you know, I hope, I hope that memo satisfies any concerns I heard the board have went all the way. Um, you have any questions? Please just let me know and I'll try to address them.
You know, she's super.
I'm going to thank you guys for coming today. And, um, again, we'll talk, we're going to talk a little bit at the meeting.
Okay.
And kind of get an idea.
Very well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good job, Brittany. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Bit of adjourned half an hour ago.
Paul's iPhone, Paul being, Paul, I mean.
He really wants. I'm here. I'm here twice.
Is that really?
I've got like four comments. Probably act like I'm defending you. That'll be part of the main.
No, actually.
And that's. Unless, can we, can we go up with executives that simple?
What's the topic?
Topic would be discussion of the bills.
Theoretically, no, unless there's a litigation.
Okay, so you can't, we'll talk about it.
I would say just talk.
I don't have anything to hide. I'm just.
When you come out of executive session, they can see.
What, 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 what I would advise, what I would say is that if you want advice of counsel.
Yeah.
We could do advice of counsel. That's a different thing. But if you need. Yeah, if you need legal advice, I could provide that.
So do we do a public case or is that cameras off at this point?
It all goes off.
Let's, let's.
Goes off.
Into counsel, so we're in mind.
Okay, uh, the board is going to go into executive session at seven fifty?
No, nope, not, no, not, not.
If we're to go into advice of counsel at seven fifty, they will not return, uh, for a decision. Right.
I, I think, I think what you're saying, Dave, is that the board will adjourn. And is seeking advice of counsel separately.
So we'll make a, make a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Sex, sex, all better.
Aye.
Any votes?